Okay, so this is the real organizational meeting for the select board in 2023. It's town clerk and they'll call the meeting order at six fifteen. And that for nominations for select board chair.
Don't move.
No.
Someone has to make a motion.
Nominate Meadow.
Second it. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Great. Great. I was expecting that, so that's fine. Alright, chair elected. Next is set regular monthly meetings, day and time. I'm really there the second Thursday of every month. We've had two per month, but I think we could, you know, how do you feel about trying just one a month?
Are they always two hours long?
Yeah.
Roughly.
And on good night.
Okay.
And.
On a good night. Yeah.
You're lucky.
Not this select board.
Yeah, so. We can also select the time, so the second Thursday and. Do we want to go back to seven? Six thirty? Do you have a preference on time? Six thirty, seven?
Six thirty, seven is fine with me.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with six thirty, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep, it works.
Second. Thursday. At six. Gail, do you have a preference on time before we?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, just.
For seven.
You prefer seven?
Go home and come back, but it's almost six thirty, typically I.
Yes.
Stay here, so.
If you prefer seven, that works for.
Yes, that's fine.
We were just. I think we were picking the number in the middle of the two times. So we'll set it for seven.
But if we, you know, make it a point to try to get done by eight thirty, that's what the planning mission does then.
We can try. Alright, designate signer for bills and orders, that's typically the chair.
Okay.
I think a motion has to be made.
I think we'll make a motion at the end.
Okay, that sounds perfect. Okay, great. So the chair will be signer myself. Newspaper of record. Who we used before? Rutland Herald. Sound good, everybody? The adopt Roberts Rules for Small Boards. A point overweight truck permit signer.
But being a usually.
Kevin, great. Point member to Community Center Board. Kathy was that, so we need a new person.
It has to be a member of the select board, it has to be.
On the Community Center Board. I am okay doing that. I was on the Mill Foil Project Board, would you like to be on the Mill Foil Project Board or the Community Center Board?
Uh, the community center.
Perfect, Judy. I'll stick with Mill Foil.
Yeah, let you stick with Mill Foil. So this is new, this is a point.
Let me see that.
Maybe the website committee met last week and looking at their. Original policy from two thousand and eight, it was supposed to be a member of the select board on that committee. And they are going to come to you in April with. Some recommendations and maybe some updates to the policy for.
Okay.
For now, if one of you wants to be on the website, maybe they would probably.
Do either of you feel a strong desire to be on the website committee?
Much about it.
Alright, Judy.
So who's that?
Judy. Liaison to Public Works Facilities Project Manager. Kevin, do you have any interest in that? You liaise with our Public Works.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Kevin. Liaison to the Rutland County Sheriff's Department.
Me.
Kevin was that for? Did you give a strong desire to do that? Great, just checking, in case you really wanted that job.
No.
Okay. Adopt select board meeting roles and procedure policy.
So I just.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, this is.
Something you started. Yeah, I think very soon.
Yeah, this is your.
Thanks. This is me.
Extra stuff, yeah, there's some. Yeah, that's right. This is mine.
I got one too.
She's got one.
There was three, I think those were, there was an extra one there, so one of you two has two, that's it.
I might have filed up all the things underneath my agenda, yep, and I did.
Was just getting ready to eat too.
Sorry. Alright, we have gone through our reorganization. So we have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve our reorganization.
Do you have a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Post. Alright, now we're going to review the agenda. There were a few things that were added.
Asking.
Asking, yeah.
I'd like to seal the grant list, the twenty twenty-two grant list, you can't leave that until after February, the listeners have signed. It just says there's no suits or appeals pending, and then it seals it and you can't go back.
Okay.
Kathy asked me. Add it to the agenda at the end, so she can talk about the ELC generator when she should sign pick a ball.
Okay, maybe we'll do that under.
So it should be coming here.
Yeah, old business or new business? Old business?
Old. I mean technically it is.
I have the turn job or termination agreement for some sales.
Oh, great.
So we need to sign that.
Okay. We'll put that under. New business. Okay. Minutes, February ninth and February sixteenth. I had a couple of edits, one was that I was actually, I was not at the February ninth meeting, it has me going into the executive session. I was not actually there.
There in spirit.
Very sick on my couch, I was not even there in spirit. It's on the. Public Works.
Okay.
Anybody else have any?
More of a curiosity question, it was talking about the. Field trip meeting we had about Kathy bringing up that the Eaton's were okay with the. Going through their property, I didn't know as an Eaton if you wanted that more under your name, or if you were fine with it being under Kathy's.
Well, Kathy, well, the minutes reflect what happened at the meeting.
Yeah.
So.
So.
She brought it up where there isn't update that, but it's.
Yep.
It can be under numbers concerns or.
So yeah, because it was discussed during the meeting, it's in the minutes, it really doesn't matter how. Done.
Anything else? Do you want a minute to go through it?
No, I'm good.
They hear a motion to approve the minutes.
Will we approve the minutes?
From both February ninth and the sixteenth.
Yeah.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Okay, citizens input. Is there anybody here or online who would like a moment to speak?
I'd just like to say something.
Sure.
I'm really glad that Kathy Reynolds is no longer on this board. And I would like to point out that the previous board has spent a tremendous amount of taxpayer money. And being fiscally responsible is one of the hallmarks of good governance. And I would charge this board with paying attention to what you're buying and who you're buying it from. I was deeply disappointed in the way that the town garage was paid for and the decisions that were made spearheaded by Kathy. And the two of you that went along with it. I'm hoping that in the future you guys will recognize. The limitations that a small town has when it comes to buying and purchasing equipment and everything. You know, it was really. Disingenuous the way that that all went down, and again, I'm very happy that she stepped out.
Thank you for your comment, Michael, anyone else?
Hi, this is Nancy. I would like to say that. If there was a way, and I don't know if there is, for the select board to be able to hold meetings. Where personal insults and assaults are not welcome, so that we can have civil meetings going forward. I would deeply appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, anyone else? Okay. Alright, Public Works Project Update. Review the sand salt shed, do we have that?
No.
No.
Stephanie is still working on the.
Okay. Well then, let's have that on the agenda for the next meeting. Highway, Eric, you're up.
I don't have really anything earth shattering. Um, been patching potholes, plowing snow, adding gravel here and there to. Cover up some of the potholes. It's an ongoing thing. Um, we had a. Yet another wheel issue on the grader, where there's now fixed, this is the third. I think this is the third one that has cracked in certain places and it started leaking. So. We worked on that. I picked up the debit card the other day, so we can get our airline stuff going in the shop. And I'm going to plan on picking up some stuff to build some stairs to the mezzanine at some point, if the weather lets me. But in that, that's. All I think they're doing.
So on the debit card, I don't have the guidelines done yet, but you need to let me know how much you're spending, so that. You know, I only put a thousand dollars in my account. So before it starts to get spent, overspent, you need to put more money. That's on the agenda for April.
Does anybody have any questions for Eric before we keep going? On this update? Alright, guidelines for used equipment. I had some. I. Basically just wanted to change this to be more like bullet points. So I reorganized the wording to be more. Like steps to be taken when. As a select board works with the staff to procure used equipment. And I would be happy to type this up and have you all look at it for the next meeting if that. I didn't have time to type it up, but. My edits are too long to go through this meeting. So.
So this is Kathy said that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'll take a stab at it.
Yep.
Hit on.
And maybe we can combine.
Yeah, yeah, well, we are, I just wanted to make it a little more. Like, if I knew nothing about how to do something, I would know how to do it.
More like a checklist almost?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, um. Where are we now? Guidelines, Vtrans grant application, how's that going?
We are working on it, it's actually due April fifteenth.
Okay.
So we're thinking that we got time.
Yeah.
So we're planning.
Check and see when the next.
Do you need any help with that?
We're waiting for the. We're just waiting for the guy to do the hydraulic study and tell us how big the hole it needs to be.
Okay.
Because then we can price out the cover over it, and we can price out them.
Okay.
We're gonna try to. Payment grant and a structures grant, correct?
That's what we're thinking, is we're gonna do both. So you will be. We're meeting before the deadline, the deadline is April fifteenth, and I think your next meeting is the thirteenth.
Okay.
I have.
We'll be tweaking it out.
I have Josh on call, Pierre Ball, he's gonna come out and look at it, and the hydraulics guy, Brian Sanderson has ordered it. The hydraulic study too. I have, they said they were gonna come out this week, but it's Thursday.
Okay.
Brian takes Fridays, I think he works four times, but I could be wrong.
Does he send a crew out to do the hydraulic study?
He might have used to, but I think he doesn't have as many texts as he used to.
So do they do that from, this is a great. Do they do that from a computer, or do they have to actually come out on site and do it?
I would hope they would come out on site, just because you see stuff in person that you don't see from pictures, but I'm not sure. That's dead, and we share the building, it's just I don't always know really what they do.
Well, I thought, he said he wanted a flag, so that's why I assumed they were coming out, and I think they could. Get a lot of it off of them. We're working on it.
Do you need any support from the select board before that, one of us?
These are pretty easy peasy.
Okay.
Grants we've done a lot in advance.
Great.
Just gotta get the numbers together, so that. When Vtrans looks at it.
Yeah. Okay.
And now it's fancy, or you have to put on the. Latitude and latitude, which you belong to the map to show, but you have to show them on the map where it is, and that pops right up, so it's.
Great. Um. Then there's the, anything else on that grant? Okay, review the ARPA grant application, this is. ARP, ARP, sorry, ARP.
AARP.
AARP, right.
And there is a problem here.
Hey, we're all headed in that direction.
Than you think. Sherry, I put on a few typos.
Sherry, do you wanna speak to this grant? Application? Oh, she's so muted.
Please.
It's not finished, but it's due next Wednesday.
Correct.
So, um. If there are typos or corrections, I would love it if you would get them to me. Um, wait a minute, I gotta go down a page. Why can't I do? There we go. Um. So let's see, the basic idea is you have to show that you're helping people over fifty. And I got, I worked with Ed Bove to get some statistics for us. And the gist of the grant is we have a town center, and we'd like it a safe place for people to walk, especially people over fifty. And we have this speeding problem, and to make it safer, we're gonna, we're asking for three. Speed feedback signs that would go on each of the twenty-five. Mile an hour, twenty-five miles per hour sign that we have in town. And we would get a flashing light that would go on top of the stop sign that is solar powered. The guy said it'll last a couple years, if we wanted one that would last a whole long time, we'd have to spend ten times the amount of money. And he thought for our application, this would work. It's not gonna cost the town any money, any dollars, but I am asking if the road crew could help. Volunteers install these if we get them. I've also put in, we have to somehow acknowledge that AARP gave us the money for it. But I'm not, I'm thinking putting them on the signs is probably not a good idea, so we'll have to work out something else. Let's see, we'll have to use the town's proc. Procurement policy, cuz it's over ten thousand dollars. Oh, come on. Welcome, we may go down. Hey.
Is it open one?
I can't get to, I can't get, get my thing to go down, let me try this, there we go. We, I had to put in a schedule, so I put in that we would. Put it out for bid in June, cuz they'll let us know in May when we get the grant. And I put in several times, we're gonna write, or I'm gonna write articles for Tales of Timoth. And because I'm over fifty, that'll be a good thing. I'm going to make a. Placard or whatever, for the fun days that will have some sort of. I don't know, sign explaining about the project. Uh, let's see, I'm trying to see what else you would really care about. And, oh, we, we need to pick up the signs at Inberry because they come with fourteen foot posts. And to ship those apparently, cuz it's. The size, it's ridiculous. So I thought maybe we could use a volunteer as an in kind for somebody to go get those.
Yes, I can volunteer to go get them.
Thank you.
My God. We're almost there every month, so.
Pretty next to the airport.
Easy.
So. Eric, what would your estimate be on how long it would take you guys? To put in the signs, I've ordered a bigger metal post because. We'll put the feedback, we'll put the feedback sign, I think, on top of the twenty-five mile an hour ahead sign.
It's. Those posts, well, it depends. You should dig safe those areas first.
Okay.
Because what we usually do with those posts, if we don't put a base in.
Oh, it comes with a base.
With a base, okay, well, you have to pound those in. Which is kind of, or you can push them in with a loader. Um, so if you're lucky, you push them into the loader and they go in in like a minute. But if you hit a rock, you have to kind of move them around and get them straight, so it's gonna take you. Ten or fifteen minutes probably to get them in the ground, and then it's. If you put it all together and just mount it and then stick it in the post base, it's not a big deal, you got. And I haven't seen one, but I'm sure you have put it all together, so.
Well, and we can have, I don't know how you feel about it, but one of the things they like is, like, volunteers could help you. Like, maybe I could hold the bolts or something.
Right. Senior volunteers.
Sometimes.
Just over, just over fifty, doesn't have to be really old.
I'm just over fifty.
Okay, well, you're gonna have a half a day, and if you got three of them, you might have a whole day. By the time you get done, you know, cuz they're all over town, right?
No, these are just.
Oh, just.
On the twenty-five, near, not near.
Because it's the senior citizen thing, we're just making the center area safer.
Gotcha.
Do those posts have to be breakaway posts, or is that just stock signs?
All of those are the same now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have the four foot base, right?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
And so it's kind of designed to be a breakaway anyway.
Cheesy as hell, they don't take much to break them off.
Okay.
So you just put the base in, then the post slides inside the base, and you put a funky little bolt in there, and you're done. So you probably wouldn't have more than half a day in it, I wouldn't think, but don't hold me to it.
Okay, so the select board would have to, like, approve that, and you wouldn't have problems with volunteers helping you?
Nope.
We'll bring brownies.
Thank you, Eric. And my question is, the only question I have is. Is it all, is all twelve thousand dollars being paid to one person, or is it broken down, whether, like, is there one item that's over ten thousand dollars?
Um, the three. Feedback signs will be over ten thousand dollars.
Then.
Well, three signs combined.
The materials are all coming from the same place.
Right, right. Procurement policy it is.
Now, the state of Vermont, we have to put a sticker on the back of all of our new signs to say what year it was installed, and I think also what route we're installing it on. If we did it and said it was AARP. Funded sign, would that work for, for it, cuz it would stay right there with, on the back of the sign, or do they need something different?
I don't know, after you get the grant, then they give you more guidance on. Recognizing them, I'm gonna suggest that we just put something. In the town center somewhere that just thanks them for it, and do a lot of publicity in tails.
Okay. And then one other comment was. Does it help the grant at all if we say how, what percentage of Timoth is over fifty or?
It should be, it should be in there, I got that.
I missed it then, thank you.
I think it's like, I don't remember.
Forty percent, I think.
Pardon me?
Think I read forty percent?
Yeah, some, and that's fifty-five and high, I couldn't get it broken down to fifty, so we're actually a little bit higher.
Okay. Is there anything else you need from the select board, Sherry?
Well, I think when I finalize it, I need someone to, you know, double check it to make sure there's like. Nothing's bad, and there is, there is one section I haven't filled out yet, and I'm going to, you can include one document, so I took pictures. And I have the Google Maps of the town center, and I'm gonna show them with my pictures. Where the signs are, so they can see, for instance, when you're coming from your place, Meadow, that twenty-five mile ahead. Miles per hour ahead in the curve and. See what we can do with that.
Okay.
So I think the board needs to approve the application.
Okay.
And stipulate that one of you will look at it before.
Before it gets.
Or somebody will look at it before she, we just go.
Okay.
And Gail, will you send me the corrections you noticed?
Yes. I have it on my list already.
Do I hear a motion to approve this AARP application being. Put together by Sherry. And. I have you, Judy, be the liaison with Sherry to.
Or I can do that.
Proofread it and. Just cuz I. Feel like you'd be good at that.
I feel a lot of signs.
Alright, so that's the motion?
Yeah, sure, it's perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
I.
I. Great. So. Thank you, Sherry. That was Gail. Giving me a hint that I needed to make sure, I thanked you, because that is the number one. Way to keep people wanting to write grants for you and helping you, so thank you, Sherry, this is very exciting, Middletown Springs. Would love to know more about this, cuz they're trying to do the same thing, but I don't think they know about this grant. Um, alright. I don't know, cuz it was a hot topic at their town meeting. Um, financial. Anything else for Highway before we move on? Anything else? No?
Something else out there.
Alright, is there anything else on that before Eric leaves that we need Eric for? I don't think so. Alright, thank you, Eric. Yes. Alright.
Thanks for being on time.
He was the first one here, well, besides, yeah, who was already here. Uh, maybe, sorry, before, was there anything under Highway? In the expenditures or financial reports that anybody wanted to ask Kevin about before he leaves? Eric, sorry, Kevin, sorry.
See you later.
I guess my only question, Eric, was. The salt. Do we have, are we paying for more salt, these are more salt, are there bills for salt coming in?
I have three.
Okay.
That's, we just got this week.
Okay. And then, have we decided how we're gonna pay for this extra helpline item? Since it's already negative, should we?
That extra help, some of that's covered by the reimbursement we're gonna get in the town garage.
Okay. This, one thing, I just need to be reminded of these things. The paving grant, I'm assuming, is going to come in. Great. And then just highway improvement projects, is there a plan, do you have a plan for that? We still have time, but.
I think that was on my list, but I'll have to look.
Okay.
The highway improvement, that was gonna be. Tracing.
Okay.
We have, it's a.
Oh, we need to. About crack ceiling, we need to talk.
A little bit, not too much.
I gotta, just though you guys are in the loop, I gotta. We got a mailing from another guy who doesn't, I was not very impressed with the last company that we had. And I got a mailing from. Another guy, so I called him. And there's a group of towns in Addison County. Who bought the machine and they share it. And then there's another place where you can rent the machine, so I was like, let's rent it cuz it's like four thousand dollars a month and those guys are like four thousand dollars a day.
Yeah.
But when I talked to him, the second guy, he's like, oh, they wanna sell that machine cuz everything they put in is pulled out and it's on the side of the road. So whether that's true or not, I have a little bit more research to do.
Yeah, we're trying to get our used equipment procurement policy or guidelines in place by then.
It sounds like a salesman thing, cuz you can rent that piece of wood.
Right.
And it's no big deal, but he said, oh, if you don't put it in right, they just peel it right back out. It's like, oh, I don't think you take some rockets on it just to.
Spray a crack in.
From crack, but.
I mean, you should clean the crack out first, just so it bonds better, but yeah.
I went and saw, they had a little thing in West Rutland, I went to the meeting and they did a strip in front of the town office there. It wasn't complicated.
They just blow it out there.
So I, I'm gonna investigate, I'm gonna call the guys in Addison and see if that's actually true. The need to continue.
Great, those are my only questions. All right, thank you, Eric.
Have a good night.
I jumped in on the financial reports. Um. Highway did. In the revenue, um. The. One of the things I noticed was just traffic tickets are, not that we need more traffic tickets, but one of the things that we were. Was suggested with that we review the sheriff department's report um to just kind of get a sense of what. Is being done in Timmouth and maybe this is a reflection of less. Um, work being done or attention being given to uh speeding, since we do know we have a speeding problem, but we have. Maybe not as many traffic tickets being written.
Kind of working on that. Through the um. New speed.
Right, I'm just saying like, um, if somebody wanted to. Follow up on that suggestion, I've tried to read through that. Um. There, there were copies of the sheriff's department report. Given out two meetings ago, three meetings ago. They're in my backpack at home.
They're available. Um, I will send you the link so you can go and log in.
Okay, very interesting. Yes.
So the sheriff is gonna come and talk to the speed limit committee.
Okay.
At the end of the month. The speed limit committee will be making recommendations to the select board.
There was something in um, a meeting we had at work last week, I think it's before the legislator about. Uh, posting speed limits, a maximum of thirty-five on gravel roads. So, just as an FYI. That is what we have here, right, Carol?
That's what we have, there's. Once it gets in the legislature, it's sometimes takes funny turns, but it, it was something, or is something that the. Speed limit committee is gonna need to look at because I think it was thinking about. Right now, any road that's not posted is fifty miles an hour. And so I think they were gonna change that. And so if it was fifty, you'd have to put a sign up, but it wasn't. I think they're gonna say everything's thirty-five, but. That has to get through the legislature before it actually. And if it doesn't meet crossover in two weeks, then it'll, they'll talk about it again next year, but. I was gonna bring it up to the speed limit.
Yeah, sorry to derail us on that, I just. Saw that and it made me think of how maybe we're also not getting as much enforcement if we're expecting to have a thousand dollars in tickets coming in.
Hoping to step that up.
But in terms of revenues, anybody have any? Comments, questions? My, one of my questions was the interest in checking.
I know, isn't that?
What is that about? I'm not complaining, that's amazing.
Our interest on the checking account.
That's a big jump.
Yeah, I mean, I went through, I went back.
Holy moly, wow.
From point oh one to, you know, two percent or something.
Oh, man. Well, I guess if your mortgage interest is going up, why not have?
Yeah.
Bank interest go up.
Well, it's only for certain accounts with this bank.
This one is getting it, that's great.
But my, my personal savings account, it has not. To talk to them and they said, if you want your interest rate to go up, you have to open up a new account, you have to close this account, it's like.
Oh.
Well, we just can't do that. I said, why not? It happened with the towns and you reduced it on your own. Yeah, can't you raise it on your own? Well, but yeah, I, I double checked that.
Yeah, that's, I was shocked, I was like, that's. A lot more. I love it. Delinquent taxes. That seems like a good number. I don't remember what we were. What we're at, is there sixty-something thousand that we have in delinquent taxes that were?
They're getting paid.
They're getting paid up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Properties are selling and they're getting paid up.
Great. The. Though the refunds and reimbursements. What was that for?
That was the overpaid insurance. So I just lumped it into there as a refund.
Okay.
Cuz the insurance comes out of several different categories and they didn't break it down for me, so I just.
Put it in there. Okay, great. More people got married.
Yeah.
It's nice. Positive outlook.
Start promoting marriage now.
Anything else in revenues, anybody? Endures. I already asked for highway. And then, yeah. Just the town report, I'm imagining we've paid for that or.
We just got a check today, it's a hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Nice.
And I did send a. Email them to say, the outside looks nice, but the inside is not the same as last year. What can we do so we don't have this next year?
Yeah.
She hasn't replied yet.
Yeah.
It looks like they printed it on draft or something, but it's not.
It's like fuzzy, yeah, it's like not as crisp. Yeah, I noticed that. Remind me what professional services is?
That's the contract for all the. Modules you use for accounting and randoms and. They support whether.
Yeah. And then did we have a plan for using the building repair, the leftover money in the building repair line item? Cuz that's just for this building.
That is for.
Do we need to use any of that when we get, hopefully get this grant? Is there a match that we needed to have or we're gonna use our funds for that?
You mean for the generator?
Yeah, for the generator grant.
It, I've gotta look and see what's covered. I thought at one point we were gonna include some of the electrical repair.
Okay.
Cuz we have to replace the panel box.
Yeah.
In order to put a generator in.
Right. Yeah, it's like a whole. Yeah.
It has to go up to two hundred.
A small amount in there that if. It doesn't, something's not covered, we could at least add a little bit. In the workers comp under law enforcement.
That's for the animal control officers.
Small numbers. Yeah.
Hundred or two hundred dollars in workers comped based on what you actually.
That's really funny.
And David Burtzall is the only one doing that, correct?
Oh, there is a deputy. Believe.
Paul Morris is the deputy animal control officer. But neither one of them actually. Occasionally, I can get David to submit a. When he's taking care of dogs or something, as I remember, right just now, like the bill before the end of June. Usually he just does it as.
Anybody have any other questions coming? Great. Gail, do you have any? Thing else to add? Right.
When did you say that we'd be getting a, we usually get a bill from um West Timmouth?
Sometimes it's in January, sometimes it's in April and May.
Yeah, last year it was very low.
It was, and I actually checked, double checked with Bill Hayes and with Frank. And they went over their records and that's all they did following, so. We did get a call from Dale Ames the other day. He got a sugar and operation up on McCoy Road and he said it was fractures. So he was trying to get ahold of Frank, who he called Frank's home number, but he also said he called Eric at the town garage. Um, so I don't know what transpired. I did talk to Eric. I don't know if Eric went to check it out or what, cuz I don't think it been sent it, but. It was last week and it was really slippery.
Yeah.
Well, actually, it was Tuesday cuz I came down from election to pick up something, you know, six messages on the machine.
So it was last week?
It was Tuesday. This Tuesday, just two days ago.
It was slippery. Over the weekend or Tuesday or something, Dale was trying to get.
He's probably trying to get up to get sap or something.
Yeah, get up to get his sap, he's got. Big up sap operation, it comes down at the end of McCoy Road there.
So you, so you said Eric took care of it?
I don't know, I haven't had a chance to ask Eric.
Have you got any more messages?
I haven't got any more messages. I did call and give him the number that I had for Frank and I called. Eric and he was gonna call Frank or go over there, but I hadn't. The road crew had the day off today.
So I guess I'd like to know if Eric handled that.
Followed up. Would you like to follow up with Eric on that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Going through the warrants and orders. Anybody have any comments, questions? I did, did not on these. And.
The payroll is the time sheets get emailed.
Okay.
They don't get copied into the packet. They were getting very, the packet. You get them.
A lot of paper.
In the email so you can see them. If you have a question about what, somewhere you're feeling on such and such a thing.
What was that guy's name?
All right, so we need to make a motion to approve the warrants and orders. And the financial reports. Are you hear a motion?
Motion to approve the warrants and orders and financial report.
Second. Great, all those in favor? Uh, any discussion? Uh, listen, have they, did we already vote? I don't remember. All those in favor? Yeah, great. All right, financial policy review, that's towards the back of the package.
So these were already last month, that was there, Kevin wanted you to.
Yeah, I read through them and they look very solid. Um, I only question was why the zoning administrator would be one of the people authorized. I don't really know what their job is, I guess, so I was just curious why they would. Be in the position, under authorized personnel, under the cash receipts, petty cash and return check policy.
Well, the zoning minister has to collect permanent fees.
End question answered. Um, I guess we'll wait for Kevin to come back.
And as time allows, there will be more of these coming along, but.
Yeah.
Right now, we've got a couple of grants. Get out.
Oh, yeah. And is this accounting auditing and financial reporting policy different?
Than.
Than the one we had before? Did we have one before? We had something similar, okay.
And so we're attempting to get things in writing.
In writing.
Um, I'm working on a manual so that somebody can go through.
Right.
You know, but we have, we have. Instructions for bookkeeper to go through and how to. Put in all the information to pay the bills and things like that and write it forward.
Yeah.
But it's not a, a formal thing, but it's.
Making it easier.
Somebody should be able to take it and.
Right.
Do this. Oh, wait. Review it, you know, once she does the.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see when you can get to look at the orders. Cuz the checks are all written, but there's in this edit list that I have to look at for.
Yeah. I am happy with these two policies myself. Does anybody else have any?
So one is set up for. Everybody to sign and one is set up for you to sign.
Okay.
So we need to move them and authorize them.
So how often do we have our books audited? I mean, it says not less than every ten years, so that like every fifteen or? Twenty?
Official audit, the last one we had was in twenty twenty. So that we could go out to bond. Right now, we have it set up to these street town auditors. Um, one of them is a CPA. Steve Goyette, when he did it fifteen years ago, he's a CPA, he set it up so that the auditors have, you know. A good plan to go through and audit things. How auditors do it. And Sandy, his wife is now one of the auditors and she works at Grines Falls Bank, so. She keeps track of everything, makes everything tie out, so it's. They actually know what they're doing.
We have like a.
So it's, so it's audited, you know, by volunteers. None of them collect their pay, Vito McCallum so and Ansar and.
Those are elected, right? So we have our elected auditors and then the. What it costs, what, thirty thousand dollars to do the audit? That makes sense. I just didn't know if there was a rule or something. Right.
Yeah, the rules to do as little as possible.
Right.
But when I checked with the, the company that did it, they said, yeah, every year it's gonna cost that much. Well, in a town, how can you?
Yeah.
So the decision was not to.
Okay, no, that's fair.
Well, it's a good question.
Yeah, no.
The school is required to do it every three years, but mostly they do it every year because they're charged the same amount for three years as they go.
Yeah.
And that's one reason this was more, cuz they had to go back a couple of years and verify this beginning balances. That, that didn't make a difference when I said, hey, can you do it every year?
Okay, so do you also like that?
Well, we have to, we have to vote on it. We have to, we need a motion to approve the. What are we calling these? The return checks policy and the accounting, auditing and financial recording policy. Go here, a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the return check policy and the accounting auditing policy.
All those in favor? All right, so let's sign these ones. Uh, yeah, you two sign that one. Work on my signature.
Yeah, I totally spaced bringing one. Cause I was in the middle of dinner.
Well, we waited and waited as long as I called. Eric said he said to you.
For some reason, seven o'clock in my head.
Actually, you can handle both of those, Gail. Right, old business. Gail, do you have anything else under financial you wanna bring up? Are we?
No.
The part? Okay. Arpa list review, that is, this, somebody put, who put this list together? Did you do this, Gail? This ARPA proposals. This ARPA proposals?
Well, these are the proposals that the community came up with.
Yeah.
Um, for September and then Kathy mentioned and.
Oh, made everything line up.
Yes.
Right, I remember they weren't quite lining up before, now it looks.
And then so I just updated a little bit.
Was that in this?
Yeah, it's in, and I think it's in the back of your, or I might have stolen. I have to.
Thank you.
Yes, sorry, I just take all the papers.
It's not like we have to make any decisions tonight, but just to keep it out there.
Yep.
You know, I have a little asterisk because the fire department, S C D A here.
Right.
Sherry said they don't need, yeah. Park money for that anymore and for this winter to the generator, so there's a little meltdown.
Right, and then the feedback signs. Are not, are they in here? They're not in here, right?
This is ARPA, she's A A R P.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading this, I've read the minutes and I put them together in my head and now I can't get it out.
Oh, people.
I know, I know.
Um, so what we can do is take the money out from the real estate transaction and that's not good.
Right.
At least not yet.
I'm right. And then I guess, um, right, we'll just wait until we find out if we get the grant or not to decide whether or not. That we want the volunteer to fire department to use that for their. Match, but I imagine that would be a good use of what they were asking for.
Right, the grant has been approved, that's what Kathy's gonna say and they're gonna, they've relaxed all the procurement stuff, we can use. We have propane, the, the ones that we have already got bids from, so.
Well, we got the grant then, so, oh, that's great.
And somehow they decided not to.
Make it really hard for us. I love that.
But don't tell Kathy.
Okay.
Let her know that I told you.
I'll act very surprised, um. Okay, um. Great, so.
So the real estate, are we just holding that there or are we thinking of reallocating?
It could be reallocated.
Because I was wondering.
I think a lot of it's gonna get reallocated to the salt and sand shit.
I, I was gonna ask about that because it would be increasing prices, I wonder if we wanted to up twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six?
Possibly.
Hmm.
Yeah, so it's.
What does?
This salt and sand, this is, this was a proposal to buy salt and sand.
Right, okay.
Not.
Not for the shed.
Mm-hmm.
And I got an email from the governor's office talking about a proposal to better fund federal grants. That have, basically what we're doing, they're going to maybe provide more funding for.
Well, I think they're seeing the writing on the wall, where they've got fifty grants and nobody can afford to actually do it.
So I'll be curious to see what additional funding will be coming, um, because we still have. Two, three years before we. I mean, we have to keep going, but.
We have to spend this, but it's.
Right.
Yeah. So once you get the RFP and you get it back, you'll have an idea of how much money we're totally gonna have to spend.
Yeah.
But anyways, this is just kind of a heads up and think about where thing needs to go and.
Okay.
You know, this was the original proposal and it could be that you just. Give.
Yeah.
A few people a little bit, and then the rest of it goes to the salt and sand shit.
But what was the amount that the fire department needed to match for the generator?
You already approved.
We already approved it. There you go.
Never has.
Already done.
I think between the two of us, we'd have to come up with eighteen thousand.
Okay.
Or close to nineteen thousand, so that's gonna come out of our, but I'm not sure how much it's fire department. The generators cost the same, but it's six or seven thousand dollars to really electrical operate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I don't have any other thoughts on that at the moment. Anybody else before we move on?
No.
Okay. Follow-up list review. That's my follow-up list at home.
That's for April.
Okay, great.
It says April.
April, yeah, right, it says right on there, I can't read. Right away, Firewood update.
That's April.
April debit card guidelines, April, I'm loving this. Um. New business report from speed limit committee.
That's gonna be. Um. I mean, we're really kind of. In the beginning stages of that, there's nothing to, um, really report on yet. Uh, next meeting is. Well, March thirtieth, seven o'clock, and hopefully gonna have some info on. What Sharon was talking about before. The speed feedback signs and Justin and David will be here for that meeting. Uh, kind of it so far on that.
The feedback signs, we're, we're talking about putting some on the East Road.
Oh, great.
As well.
Yeah.
Sharon's grant.
Five totals.
To be some on the field, so.
Yeah.
Go on each, so there's. Five total. That we're looking at.
Three funded by A A R P and two funded.
Yes.
Somehow else.
The ones on East Road are gonna cost more. Because the speed limit is higher. Just.
Um, so.
And if we don't get the A A R P money. There's another grant coming from A O T that's gonna deal with. These kinds of things, so there's more money down.
We can just keep applying to.
We can, yeah. Yeah, that was what the. Guy from the regional planning commission, Ethan Peppin said.
Right.
Is prioritize, make a list of what you wanna do, prioritize it, and then as grants come along, you can find some money to go do it.
Great.
And I think our priority, we decided was the twenty, well. East Road's a priority, but coming into these twenty-five.
Yeah.
And we're gonna reduce, you know, speed reduction.
Yeah.
Things in front of them, right now it goes from fifty to twenty-five.
We're gonna drop.
Fifty to thirty-five.
Yeah.
The committee was pretty enthusiastic.
That's great. Have you, it's just one meeting so far?
Yes.
Nice. Well, that's good.
So our next select board meeting, I'll. Should have.
You'll have more information clearly after that meeting.
Yep.
Great. Alright, next is annual appointments for committees and commissions. Um, I'd ask Gail ahead of this, I just had a question about, um. Normally, our. Procedure is if anybody wants to stay on, they just stay on. Um, but I was curious if. We were, wanted to open it up to new people, a lot of our commissions and committees are full. Um, and a lot of those people really like staying on and, um. There might not be anybody else who wants to join any of them, but, um. Just giving the community an opportunity to. If somebody was interested, join or. Present their interest to also participate in.
There was a notice in tails.
Oh, man.
Look at the county for, the interest in being where called, any of these other things and.
Yeah.
No one has responded. I did send. A mass email to everybody that's on here yesterday that said, if you don't want to continue, please let me know.
Right.
And I got responses from two people. And two other people had already said, well, instead of everybody saying yes.
Right, just say whether you don't want to.
It's I have verified with the people that have terms, that they want to continue serving. Um, so I don't know if you want to know, you might go over it, or there are some openings from some of the. The committees. You know, there's also a note, um. Certainly.
It's on the one you gave us, there's notes on here.
It's a, right, but also on the agenda that I did was.
Oh, right.
Need a tree policy committee, do you need an ARPA committee?
At this point.
About creating a recreation committee. Um. There seemed to be a bunch of interest in it last year.
Right.
I did talk to conservation commission about it and they said they would rather do conservation commission stuff.
And have a separate committee.
Like to have joint members maybe with somebody in the recreation committee, so. I think there are. Opportunities, so when there's a vacancy, the board announces it, like.
Right.
Two people stepped off the. Website committee.
Yeah.
Um. And two people stepped off equity and inclusion, and if you create a recreation committee. That seems like.
Yeah. And I guess my question was just if we also wanted to, um, there's like the board of adjustment and the planning commission. Has terms, so if we wanted to. Also, I don't know if we also put those up as saying there's an opportunity, if you want, every year there's an opportunity to join either of those, um. If people also want to join.
You before is nobody has been removed from. Any of these.
Right.
Positions.
Right.
Um. If they wanted to serve, sometimes it's hard to find anybody to serve.
Right.
So it's.
Yeah.
Um. And Judy's gonna decide whether she wants to stay on the planning commission or not.
I was assuming I was going to. That's great.
That's good, because you can. Select board members in the past, I think Caleb and maybe Michael Fannin were on the select board the same time they're on the.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Um, I. Would. Propose that we create the. Recreation com- recreation committee. Um. And. Dissolve the. Where is it?
ARPA.
ARPA and.
Hmm.
Well, we haven't spent the ARPA money yet, do we need to keep them as a committee until we've spent it all or?
It depends, it's sweet, it sounds like we're gonna.
Spend, yeah, alright, so. My suggestion is we dissolve the ARPA committee and the, what is it, the tree policy committee?
Well, if, if David Burtzall wasn't so adamant about doing the, the tree policy stuff himself without a committee. You could actually use a tree policy committee, but. They haven't met in several years.
Yeah, so.
Specific thing that they were working on and.
Yeah.
It never got finished, so.
So I would, my suggestion is we dissolve those, create the recreation committee. And then post something looking for volunteers. As well as the openings for all of the. Um. The openings on all of the committees that are, have openings. And I would like to entertain the idea of, um. Just as a way to get new people involved in our bigger committees and commissions, um, we have some. People, the ones with term limits, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but, um. If there was somebody else in town who wanted to be on the board of adjustment or the planning commission, um, and who wanted to. Present their interest, and then we would have to decide, decide as a select board. Whether we. Remove someone or not, but there may not be anybody who wants to join either one, but, um.
And in the past, if anybody's had interest, we just keep a little running list and when somebody comes, when an opening comes up.
Yeah.
They would get added on to it.
Yeah. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that, but some of these are longstanding.
Be cautious of removing somebody if they still want to volunteer, I guess if you wanna. Impose term limits, would we need to.
I don't think you can.
Redefine the town plan or something to say you can only be this for three years?
I don't know, I don't think statutorily you have the authority to do that.
Right, we can't have term limits.
So I mean, having a, of a, a, a working list. Of people.
Right, I'm just saying, like, if nobody ever steps off something for years on end, then how do we ever get new people? New voices on?
Well, the board of adjustment has three new people on it. You know, there was people that stepped down last year.
Oh, yeah.
The planning commission in the past has had a pretty good turnover, but right now it's a pretty good. Lease of unit that's.
Well, I'm the newest and I've only been on it for a little bit over a year, so.
Right. Yeah.
Feel like you wanna get done yet?
No. Okay, interesting. Yeah, it's just, just, I, I had asked the question about term limits before and then I learned that you can't set term limits, but I'm. Was trying to find out if there was a way for, you know, if we had a. Interest in a certain position that was full, how you would. You just have to wait until somebody gets off or. And just how we, how we do that.
Just have a working list of people that would like to do it. Find an opportunity to.
Yeah, and I guess it's just about how do we make that known, so it's not just like a, there's just not just a list somewhere, but if there's a. Opportunity to join, anybody can find out about it and hear about it.
Could we maybe update the committees once a year of saying, hey, these people are interested if anybody really isn't.
That's happened.
Yeah.
That's happened.
Mm-hmm, you know, nobody's really a hundred percent committed anymore and you.
Right.
Right.
And you want to get done, but don't know how to say, I wanna get done. These people are willing to step.
Right.
These people are willing to step in, yeah, it's like, that's.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
People were feeling like. They were on there, but just to hold space, um.
Or didn't realize that there was somebody else to step into the gap, so they could step out.
Yeah. That makes sense, so we could have a working list of willing volunteers to join, um. If an opening. Presents itself.
I really pie in the sky.
Well, I'm just saying, I just feel like it's.
Wonderful.
Um, you know.
It's been difficult to find, you know, people to fill it.
Right.
It comes and goes and spurs, so sometimes there's great interest and then they get on it and they find out what it's really like and. That's, that has happened.
Yeah.
So.
So how do we, right, there'd be a way to verbalize that when we're asking for volunteers for our, uh, recreation committee, which we still have to vote on, um. Also saying if you're interested in joining any of the other commissions or committees, um, that are. Not currently looking for, uh, volunteers, but would like to have your name. Added to a list of people willing to participate, um. Also, let us know, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, you should have been written that, writing that down, if you ever.
Really hoping Gail is listening, there's a recording. Perfect.
So we do have the most, the other vacancies.
Yeah.
You know. Because it's not like we're gonna come up with, who wants to be on the website.
Right.
There are specific people in.
Yes.
Websites policy.
Yeah.
Um, who needs to be there, but, you know, for the recreation committee, you want to say.
Right.
Who's interested.
Who's interested?
Yes.
How many people?
You want, you want five and you want seven.
Five.
You don't get too big.
Five is good.
Right, but you get six people.
Right, really wanna be on it, you can have.
I would say, are you gonna pick one to not have one?
Right.
So if we get six, we bumped it to seven.
Okay, you have the flexibility to.
Um.
You want to get people involved.
We need to make a motion to create a recreation committee.
Do you wanna, um, in the same motion or does it need to be a different one, remove the other two committees?
Okay, let's do. Two motions, okay. First motion, um. To create a recreation committee. Go here, second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Uh. Right now, I need a motion to dissolve the. ARPA committee and the tree policy committee.
I know we. Remove the tree policy committee and the ARPA committee.
So none of them responded that they wanted to be taken off their committees.
True. I mean.
Well.
Sherry on here, she wanted to weigh in and then, um. The tree policy.
You can do it in a big, big uproar.
We can undo it, that's true. And I would just like to thank the people who are. Saying yes to keep going and also the people who are stepping down, um, but have served. Um, several things, Sherry stepping down and. Only from a few things, yes, I'm trying to read these notes properly, um, and I also just wanted to thank Logan and Nancy. Burtzall, who are also stepping off of a couple of committees for their hard work and dedication. Is there any, is there anyone else that is stepping off, I should. Thank.
Um, Michael Fannen is.
Oh, yeah.
He doesn't wanna be in my team.
That's a big one, we need to. Yes, and I thank you to Michael Fannen, cause he has reluctantly filled that position for several years now, so.
So that is a vacancy.
That'll be a vacancy, and that'll be announced on. And then tails.
Okay. If it's a great, contact camera office before your next meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thanks so much.
If you had two motions.
Oh, one at a time. We, we voted on the first one, and then we need to vote on.
Creating.
The dissolving that we, we're voting on, um.
Dissolving the two committees.
Judy made a, made a motion to dissolve the ARPA committee and the tree policy committee.
I second it.
You second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, done, and done. Alright.
So are you going to. Reappoint everybody? And then fill the vacancies at the next meeting, or?
Um, let's do it all at the next meeting. Alright. We've got two draft, I've got two agendas here, but I think. Kathy hasn't come yet, maybe because our meeting started so early, I don't know, we wanna talk about the sealed grant list.
Oh, yeah.
And the EOC generator?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
No, I need really cool. Sign the highway.
Okay, is it good?
That was approved with the last meeting. And so this is the termination of the purchase and sales contract for the right-of-way from over the Strattens.
Right.
I think we need authorize you to sign it as chair.
Okay.
And then we have to get the Strattens to sign it, and then it goes away.
Right, we need a motion.
It says it's.
I'll make a motion that Meadow sign it as chair.
Second. Okay, you are seconding it?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So that, you know, that proposal goes away.
Yeah, did you wanna read that termination?
Did I do with the?
Definitely, thank you.
Yeah, it's simple. Do we need Judy to also sign this, or is this already done, just needed my signature?
That was approved.
At the last.
At the last meeting in February, but you weren't here, so. I need to figure it out. Alright, what did I do with the? Seal thread with.
Let me just double-check my title of paperwork, it's possible I.
The list was assigned, so I thought I had it here.
Did you start?
I did, that's my. This is my name, I swear.
Okay, perfect. This stuff's all safe.
Yeah.
Well, even the folder works. For stuff for the meeting. So the list was assigned, I just need the select board to. Move and sign it. So we'll not seal them.
Great.
Do we need to move? That we, the two twenty, twenty-two grand list?
Yes.
So moved?
So I seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've sealed the grand list, signed the purchase and sale termination.
So I guess I can just re-did the emails and.
Thank you.
I can find it. Did I bring it over there?
Well, I don't think so. Oh.
Now, it's just a little. Maybe. For the generator project, it says. Turns out they, the EOC. Energy people are waiting for procurement requirements and are anxious to move the money ASAP. No competitive bid is required, if you have two quotes, and we can just state that we want to use our existing propane supplier. So I'd say it's a go, they sent paperwork, she signed it, and.
I've never heard of anybody wanting to move funds immediately.
To run a long round, all these forms and federal, national.
Oh.
On the National Register of Historic Places and all this other stuff, so it's.
Thanks.
Has to figure out where they really want the generator to go.
Yep.
We're assuming on.
Yeah.
The north end, near the things, and.
Yeah.
And we're still trying to figure out where to put it here.
Right.
Cause our panel's over there.
Yep, it's on the other side, and for us, it's on this side, but so. Not really any place to put it here unless we put it in the flower bed, so. Because it has the, the propane tanks have to be a certain distance from the windows, and the generator has to be so far from the building, and. So I think she told them that we're gonna have the electrician help us figure out where to actually sign it.
Yeah, yeah, cause you would definitely have a better idea how to do that, and where to put it, leaving the propane people would too.
Right. You know, so our, our electricity comes in here, so that, you know, the panel box is right here, they're gonna move the panel box, and I think they're just gonna feed it through this one, but. I don't think they're going too far with it. Not like, not like I think, you can't put it on the other side of the building and.
Right. No.
Right.
There's only so many places, well.
Yeah, so that looks like, so it looks like that.
That's very exciting. Delighted.
Everybody heard of anybody in a rush to move money?
Wow.
Do they know how this works?
Well, they've been driving this on for months.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, they do know how it works, that.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, there was a whole bunch of stuff that came from. Regional Commission about. Um, energy stuff, I will send it to you, you don't have to apply right away, municipal energy reasonably its programs. I will send it to you, you can put it on the April agenda, but they've got money, they wanna spend four thousand dollars, you can hire somebody to write grants or. Do energy audits and all this stuff, and, you know, they've got a ton of money that they wanna spend, but. That's been two years in the making, too.
Yeah.
Getting buildings in the states, building and general services. To get the program in order. First, they said that they're gonna do it, and they said they couldn't, and then they said they would. The regional commissions are happening, helping, so I'm gonna call Barbara pulling up regional commission and saying.
Okay.
So that will be.
Be on our April. Awesome, I love. I love grants.
Right.
Alright, um. Feedback form, do you have any feedback forms? Great. Um, correspondence and mail. Just the important.
Oh, and I think there. Oh, okay, the Vermont leader cities in town wants to set up some kind of independent contact thing, so you can access them quicker or. Um, it's.
New idea.
No idea, yes.
Alright, great, um, do we need an executive session? No, not that I know of, um. Members' concerns. No, no. Our next meeting is Thursday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven o'clock.
And at that meeting, there's gonna be somebody that's gonna do like a twenty-minute presentation on the National Water Insurance Program.
So we want to be earlier.
We need it to be earlier than seven? No. It'll be.
It depends how much. Seven thirty and I'll say.
Yeah. How do you guys do?
Well, do we? Can we adjust the time as we get closer, there's a lot of stuff that ends up on the agenda that we weren't planning on, or do we have to set the time now?
Well.
Well, if you set it now at six thirty, you talk to this guy, then you'll be starting your regular business at seven.
Okay.
You can, you can do that, even though you said your regular readings are at seven.
Right.
Sometimes when you have a presentation, they come in early, and then you figure this is after. It helps the guy that's.
Yeah, I would.
Travel from.
Yeah, right, yeah, six thirty would be.
Yep.
Would work for me.
Reasonable.
Yeah. You just all have to bring Gail a snack.
And somebody's gonna have to apparently call me or text me.
So at six thirty is going to be the presentation.
Right, and now it's gonna be done by seven.
And, yeah, yeah, perfect.
There's maybe eleven properties in town that have. Would qualify for the flood insurance.
Yeah.
For what most people don't know is it doesn't cover very much, it covers the basement.
Yeah. Hey, great.
But it gets us more money if we have a flooding event. Instead of seven and a half percent reimbursement from the state, we get twelve and a half percent.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the reason to have the flood insurance.
Yeah. Great. Alright, that's our whole agenda. Anything else before we adjourn?
Judy, can you give Gail your email address so I can send you this, this weekend?
Yeah, I can do that.
Um.
I might as well for this one, I haven't set up the, the other one yet.
Very, it's on, her email address is on the planning commission, the stuff that we mailed to Kim for the planning commission.
Okay, it's the one without a name?
Yep, it's A-I-N-N or something.
Okay. Alright.
But I will set up a more official one.
Thank you.
Using AI.
Great, anything else from you, Gail? Alright, I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will, motion we adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Second, alright, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, let's adjourn the meeting at seven thirty, I can't read that, five?
Thereabouts.
Okay, I'm gonna.